The USA Radio Network presents the greatest radio programs of all time.
Jack Benny Program.
Look bud, I said your money or your life. I'm thinking it over.
River McGee and Molly.
Straighten up that buzz one of these days.
This is Classic Radio Theater.
The Great Gildersleigh.
The Bob Hope Show, transcribed direct from Hollywood.
Well hello, come right in. Oh George, we've got company.
From Hollywood, the George Burns and Gracie Allen Show.
Now here's your host Wyatt Cox.
Will Rogers Jr. starring in Rogers of the Gazette as it was originally broadcast July 22nd, 1953.
Ladies and gentlemen, the editor of the Elyria Weekly Gazette, Mr. Will Rogers Jr.
Thank you. You know lots of people say that public opinion should be guided by our best politicians and statesmen. The only thing is that all too often our politicians and statesmen are best guided by public opinion.
Rogers of the Gazette, offering you again tonight, transcribed, another heartwarming story of a country newspaper and its friendly editor, and starring Will Rogers Jr. It's like any other small town, but the folks who live in Elyria wouldn't live anywhere else. Now that it's summer, the trees have leafed out in the square around the town hall, and the grass is growing up thick and green. The Weekly Gazette faces one side of the square where Will gets out the weekly paper. He and Maggie Button, his assistant. Of course, Will's likely to be anywhere but in his office, fishing, out visiting, or like this afternoon maybe, sitting in on a meeting of the Town Council.
All right gentlemen, members of the council, mark your ballots, fold them as usual, place them in the box.
Here's mine mayor.
Whoa, thank you Avril, didn't take you long to make up your mind eh?
I had it made up.
Will, they're gonna vote it down, they're certain to.
Now Ava, I figure the only thing certain in this world is that nothing is certain.
It's old Avril Dean, he's responsible for it. As long as he's in office, there's no chance of getting it.
You visitors, gonna have to be quiet, or else leave the council room. All right boys, pass those ballots on up now.
The town needs that youth center, Will, I know those kids on the edge of town. I've worked with them for three years now on the welfare board. They'd be a lot different if they had a place like that to go to, a place that belonged to them.
Ava, you're quoting my own editorial, Zapp.
In the matter of the motion to purchase a parcel of land for the construction of the youth center, the council votes as follows. Three votes yea, four votes nay, motion is defeated.
And a good thing too, another fool's scheme to spend the taxpayers' money.
Oh really grandfather, is the taxpayers' money more important than the taxpayers' children?
Now here, Ms. Lawson, now this is a council meeting, not an open hearing. You were given a chance to present your suggestion, and the council has not acted on it, and the matter is closed.
Of course it is mayor, because grandfather, Mr. Dean says so. Mr. Dean owns the town and the council. Look at next week's election, why nobody's even got the nerve to run against him.
Here here, you're out of order Ms. Lawson.
Well he can't be fooling all the people, Will.
He doesn't have to, just enough of them to get elected.
If somebody would only run against him, I'll bet they could beat him.
Well it's worth a try, why don't you do it?
Me?
Sure, people in the town know you, they know what you stood for on the welfare board, and what you know what you believed in.
That's no qualification for holding down.
Ava, politics is the only profession in this country where you don't need any qualifications to get a job.
Do you really think there's a chance?
You'll never hatch chickens if you don't set some eggs, what have you got to lose?
I'll do it. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce my candidacy for the office of Town Councilman.
Well Ms. Lawson, the final date for filing was a month ago, the election's next week.
But, I'm running as a write-in candidate.
Well, this is hardly the place to-
Furthermore, I'd like to announce that I'm being supported by the Elyria Weekly Gazette and its editor.
Now wait a minute Ava.
You got to, Will, you talked me into this?
Yeah, but Maggie and I have always made sure the paper stayed nonpartisan in these local elections.
You and Maggie want that youth center just as bad as I do. All right, you'll never hatch chickens if you don't set some eggs, now what have you got to lose?
Just half of my circulation and advertising and... Oh confound it, yes, I'll support you. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, what Ms. Lawson said is correct, the Gazette is backing her all out.
What? No, no, gentlemen, gentlemen please, Mr. Rogers, this is the council meeting, not a newsstand. Gentlemen, please now, please, now just a minute now, the council is adjourned.
Will, I trust you'll come to your senses when you think this over. Meantime, I'll ask you to cancel my advertising, political and business.
All right, Mr. Dean.
For you young lady, I... Good day both of you.
Maybe you have got something to lose, Will.
Ava, what the dickens is all this? Somebody out in the hall was saying you're gonna run for the council.
I am Jim.
But you've got no business in politics.
Look who's talking, the city attorney.
Oh that's different, I'm not a woman, reason with it, Will, talk her out of it.
Be glad to Jim, but there's only one trouble though, I talked her into it.
That's right, Will's backing me, we're in this together.
Oh, I see.
See what?
Well I thought it was always you and I who were in things together.
Oh now wait a minute Jim, it's nothing like that, it's business, politics, not a-
Yeah sure, well, good luck to you.
Jim, wait. What jealous idiot, I'll have to go talk to him.
Yeah, maybe you better.
All right Will, I'll meet you at your office later. Hello Doc.
Hello Ava. Well, 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 if it isn't the boy alone on the burning deck whence all but he have fled.
Hi Doc.
You and that Lawson girl seem to have stirred up quite a ruckus, Will.
Yeah, I'm just beginning to realize it.
Pretty girl, might be a good thing if she was on the council.
Doc, what's this about Ava being old man Dean's granddaughter?
It's a fact, Will, on her mother's side. The old man didn't approve of his daughter's husband, ran him out of town before Ava was born. Mother died later, Ava put herself through college, came back here and got that welfare job. She sure is a pretty girl, mighty pretty.
Holy smoke!
What?
I just happened to think, wait till Maggie hears about this.
Will, I'm only saying what you've always said yourself.
Now Maggie.
A small town newspaper can't survive unless it stays nonpartisan in local elections.
I know that Maggie, but-
So what do you do? You not only jump right in with both feet, you jump in on the losing side.
Now wait a minute, you're calling me out before I even get up to bat. I don't think Ava Lawson's gonna lose, I think she's got a darn good chance.
She's very pretty, isn't she, Will?
Now Maggie, why do you have to start in on that?
Well, isn't she?
Yes, but confound it, that's got nothing to do with it. It's a matter of principle Maggie, now if Ava gets in, she'll make sure that youth center's built. That's something we've been trying to get done for a year, you're all for it yourself, you know you are.
But Will, Mr. Dean took a full-page political ad in tomorrow's edition. When he hears about this, he'll probably cancel.
He has heard about it, and he has canceled.
Will.
Now wait Maggie, maybe we will lose some money, but we're backing a candidate who stands for something. Remember, it's not the price that counts, it's what a thing's worth.
Okay Will, I don't know why I'm arguing, when you're for it, I'm for it.
Good girl Maggie, now look, we're gonna have to break this page and kill Dean's ad, put one of Ava in the place of it.
But we, we oughta use a picture, Will, that'll pull in some votes.
Good idea, then we gotta knock out a new editorial, we gotta work up some speeches this week. We'll get out a special edition the day before election, and Maggie, we're gonna be busier than a pair of bobtail fillies in springtime.
I could go on ladies and gentlemen, tell you of incident after incident I've come across in my work with the welfare board. Things most of you haven't known about, well I've known about them, and so have some of our town fathers. It's about time something was done, and if you see fit to elect me to the council, something will be done.
Now don't get worried folks, I'm just here to introduce the candidate and sort of tell you how I stand on this election. I'll wind up the whole job in five minutes. You know when it comes to speeches, I've always agreed with the fellow who said that a speech ought to be like a woman's dress. Just long enough to cover the subject, but short enough to maintain interest. You know our opponent has done a lot of talking about horse sense. I guess that's good enough, only I don't just see that it means too much. I've always figured that horse sense was only just about what sense you need to stand up between the shafts of a wagon and let yourself be hitched up and driven.
Daddy, you haven't forgotten about the ice cream cone, have you?
No Jill honey, don't you ever think of it.
Well usually I'd know you wouldn't forget daddy, but Mrs. Weatherwax says you've got lots in your mind this week.
Chill baby, have I been neglecting my very best girl?
That's all right daddy, I want Ms. Lawson to get elected too, I think she's pretty, don't you?
Yeah, I guess she is. Look honey, I got a fine idea. Ms. Lawson and Ms. Button and I are gonna work at the office tonight, getting out a special edition. How'd you like to come down with us and stay up late and maybe have some hot chocolate?
Oh could I daddy?
You sure could honey, now let's go in the bank here, I want a cash check.
Hiya Jill honey.
Good afternoon.
Hello Doc.
Well Will, way it stacks up around town, looks like you got yourself a winning candidate in Ava Lawson.
I'm keeping my fingers crossed.
Election's day after tomorrow, can't much happen in that length of time.
Maybe not, but the day you cut the hay is always the day it rains.
I don't see any clouds daddy.
You're right honey, there aren't any clouds. Look, why don't we all go down to the drugstore and get some ice cream?
That is a good idea, Will.
I think I'll have a double strawberry cone with black walnuts on top.
And I think I'll have a double banana split.
Oh Doc. Now let's get the rest of your life history Ava, we're up to college, where did you go?
State U, major in social science.
State U, four years?
No, five, well I, I was out a year.
All right, five years, then what?
Here's a statement for the compage, Will.
Oh swell Maggie, give it to Ed and have him set it up.
Okay. Here you go Ed, twelve point two column box.
Is it going to be much longer daddy? I'm getting sort of tired.
Just two shakes of a rabbit's tail honey, we'll be going home before you know it. Now uh, let's see Ava, where were we?
Hello Will.
Jim, is there something wrong?
I saw your car in front, so I figured you were here.
Yes, we've been busy getting the special edition ready and I-
Too busy to keep up to date.
Oh Jim, I'm sorry, I forgot all about it.
Well that's a simple enough reason.
Jim, I'm sorry, I-
Don't bother, I'll see you around.
Ava, maybe I didn't do you a favor by talking you into this.
What was he so mad about daddy?
Well, don't you worry about it honey, you just curl up there in a chair and we'll be through in no time.
Evening everybody.
Hi Doc.
Hello Doc.
I saw Jim leaving just as I came in, I suppose he told you the news.
What are you talking about?
Got a copy of the County Herald here, come in on the eleven o'clock bus, boys are selling them on the streets.
Elyria, they've never sold an edition here before.
This one's an extra Maggie, I understand old man Dean's backing them.
Well, I guess it doesn't surprise me much.
This will though, big front page article, pictures and all, here.
Let's see what the opposition, these pictures, why they're you Ava?
Let me see. Will, they're prison pictures, with a number under them.
Elyria Reform Candidate Ex Convict, this is liable, we'll sue them for every cent they've got.
Will, no, it happens to be true.
True?
I served six months for forgery, my sophomore year in college.
Ava, well I-
I'm sorry, Will.
Now wait a minute.
No Will, let me go, just let me go.
The Sam Hill's this all about?
Howdy folks, County Herald photographer, gotta get some pictures, is there a Ms. Ava Lawson here?
No, and get out.
Easy boy, power of the press you know.
I've gotta go after her, take over here will you Maggie?
Of course Will.
I'll go with you, Will.
Thanks Doc, come on.
You are listening to Rogers of the Gazette, starring Mr. Will Rogers Jr. We'll return to tonight's story in just a moment, but first-
July 22nd, 1953, Rogers of the Gazette on Classic Radio Theater.
Are you looking for senior care for your mom or dad but don't know where to start? Hi, I'm Joan London with The Place for Mom. Nobody knows your parent or loved one better than you, and nobody knows senior living better than the experts at A Place for Mom. They've helped thousands of families find the right place for their mom or dad. I was so glad that I called A Place for Mom, my advisor really listened, and was truly my partner in finding senior care for my dad. She went out of her way to get to know him as a person, and was always there whenever I had a question. The senior living advisors at A Place for Mom partner with thousands of families every month, listening and offering local knowledge and advice to help find the best senior living communities across the country, and it's a free service, here's the number.
Call A Place for Mom at 1-800-370-2715.
There's a place for answers, A Place for Mom, call today.
Call A Place for Mom at 1-800-370-2715, that's 1-800-370-2715.
I used to wonder when I saw people going into nice hotels, really nice hotels, taking a pillow with them. That was before I got a MyPillow, because I know it doesn't matter where I'm going, whether I'm going to a one-star, three-star, five-star hotel, MyPillow goes with me, whether it's just overnight or whether it's on vacation. And here's the great deal about MyPillow right now, the lowest price ever offered on radio or TV. Two MyPillow premium pillows for $69.98, that's only $34.99 per pillow, the lowest price ever offered on radio or TV. And it's still the same pillow, great pillow, sixty-day money-back guarantee, ten-year warranty, and call them, 1-800-951-8175, or go to mypillow.com, use promo code USA, click on the two-pack special, and get the best deal you've ever gotten on a good night's sleep when you get a MyPillow.
Attention business owners and independent contractors, this is a money-saving message from Tax Mediation Services. If your business owes $20,000 or more in taxes, we can help you today, right now. Listen, dealing with the IRS is no picnic, it's an intimidating and extremely stressful process, and you don't want to go it alone. Our attorneys know every law, every tax break, and every possible opportunity to help you resolve and reduce your tax debt. And if you owe more than $20,000, you may be at the top of their hit list. So don't take your tax debt lightly, because it will not go away on its own. The IRS can seize your bank accounts, your home, and even shut down your business. Call our tax experts today at 1-800-318-1574, and let us deal with the IRS while you focus on your business. That's 1-800-318-1574, again, that's 800-318-1574.
And you're listening to Classic Radio Theater on your favorite station, July 22nd, 1953, Will Rogers Jr., Rogers of the Gazette.
I can't figure it Doc, now why the dickens would she want to drive out here to Jedders Lake?
Women will, they don't think like normal people.
Neither do normal people, she must be down there at the boat landing.
Somebody else driving in, Will, headlights back there?
Yeah, Doc, wait here will you, I better talk to her first alone.
All right, Will.
Ava? Ava?
Leave me alone, Will.
Now, a boat landing at midnight's no place to solve anybody's problems Ava. Hadn't you better get back from the edge, water's pretty deep there.
I know it is.
You know, all you'd do would be to get us both kind of wet.
No, I'm not gonna jump, Will. I thought I was, but I couldn't. I'm sorry I got you into all this.
Well, I figure a few mistakes through life are kind of good for a person. They kind of make him get up and scratch, same way with a dog. He's better off if he's got a few fleas, gives him something to think about, keeps him from setting around and brooding over being a dog.
Oh Will.
Come on now, let's get back to the office and see what we can pull out of this wreck.
All right, but I'm afraid this is not my-
Watch out, watch out, hang on, I'm coming. It's all right, I gotta hold you, relax now, don't kick around.
Hey folks, look up here, that's it, hold it, thank you.
What was that?
Flashbulb Ava, we just got our picture taken.
Would you like some more coffee Ava?
Oh thanks, I would Maggie.
Okay.
Well, that's the story of my childhood, Will.
Kind of a rough one.
Yeah.
The other happened in my sophomore year in college. I'd worked and saved enough money for my first two years at State U, but I was sick during my freshman year and the money ran out. I was desperate and I forged some checks so I could stay in school, no excuse, I just did it. I was caught, and I served six months in jail.
But you finished college, you went back.
Yes, because one of the professors had the faith and the kindness to take me in hand. She taught me understanding, gave me the courage to go back. Told me that people were kinder than I knew, and they were, Will.
Ava, have you got the nerve to go back again?
Go back again?
I mean, to stand up in front of the people of this town and tell them what you've just told Maggie and me, the whole story, everything?
It's quite a thing to face.
You did it once before.
All right, when?
Tomorrow night. What, tonight? Holy smoke, it's two in the morning. Now you go home and get some sleep, Maggie and I still gotta get the paper to bed.
All right, Will.
I'll fix it so we can use the bandstand in the park, we'll probably have a big turnout, they'll all be curious if nothing else. Go on now, get out of here.
I'll get these clothes back to you tomorrow Maggie.
Oh, there's no hurry, goodnight Ava, and good luck.
Good luck.
Thanks, not will.
Well Maggie, I guess we're in kind of a spot.
I love understatement.
Now we're gonna kill that front page story, just carry an announcement about Ava's speech in the park. Maybe they'll go along with her and maybe they won't.
Well common sense ought to tell them what's best for this town.
Maybe, but common sense is about the most uncommon thing that I know of. There is one outside chance though, I'll have a talk with old man Dean in the morning.
Dean, what for?
Well I've gotta do something, and it's just possible he's not as mean a man as he seems. Come to think of it, I don't think anybody could be.
Have a seat, Will.
Thanks, may not be here long, Mr. Dean, I guess I'll stand up. This painting here, your wife?
Yes.
She looks a lot like your granddaughter Ava, imagine your daughter did too.
Did you come here to compare family resemblances, or did you have something on your mind?
Well, a little of both maybe. Mostly I guess I came to find out why you let the Herald use that story about your granddaughter.
Well, I not only let them use the story, I gave it to them.
Ooh, July 22nd, 1953, Rogers of the Gazette on Classic Radio Theater.
You know, for a while I worked in a hotel and I really used to go, why do people bring their own pillows with them? Well, once I got a MyPillow, I understood. Because, doesn't matter how good the hotel is, doesn't matter whether it's a two-star, three-star, five-star hotel, it doesn't matter how nice the hotel is, if you don't get a good night's sleep, and the key to getting a good night's sleep is a MyPillow. Now, the best deal ever offered on MyPillow, right now, you go to mypillow.com, enter our promo code USA, click the two-pack special, and folks, you're gonna get two MyPillow premium pillows for $69.98, that's $34.99 per pillow, the lowest price ever offered on radio or TV. Now, it's the same MyPillow we've been talking about for months. It stays cool all night long, you don't wake up and flip the pillow over in the middle of the night. It keeps its shape, you don't have to fluff it up in the middle of the night. Sixty-day money-back guarantee, ten-year warranty, and that's the deal. Try it for sixty days, you don't like it, send it back. Ten-year warranty, tell me another pillow you've got that's got a ten-year warranty, nah. And the great thing is, it's always as clean and fresh as new. If you're getting in a mess, or after, you know, a couple of weeks, throw it in the washing machine, toss it in the dryer, fluff it up, and you got a brand-new MyPillow. The lowest price ever offered on MyPillow, two MyPillow premium pillows, $69.98, $34.99 a pillow. You see if you can find a price like that anywhere else, go to mypillow.com, click on the two-pack special, enter my promo code USA, or call 1-800-951-8175, the best deal ever. And by the way, that promo code, USA, works on anything on the MyPillow website, mypillow.com.
You're listening to Classic Radio Theater on your favorite station, now the conclusion of Rogers of the Gazette, starring Will Rogers Jr., July 22nd, 1953.
You gave it to them.
Yes, the people of this town had a right to know the truth about a candidate who was asking for their votes. I've always known about Ava's term in jail.
You mean that all the time your daughter was half starving and struggling to bring up Ava, you didn't turn a hand for her?
She made her choice when she married that no-good Lawson. As far as Ava was concerned, since she'd inherited a father's weakness, there was nothing to be done for her.
Oh, I see.
Well there you are, Will, like them or not, there are your answers.
Mr. Dean, the way I figure it, now when a man does anything, he usually has three reasons. The one he says out loud, the one he thinks, and the real one, and it's the real one that's important. You kept track of your daughter all through the years, but you didn't go near her, why?
I told you.
Because you loved her, and you quarreled, and that bull-necked pride of yours wouldn't let you back down. On the surface, you told yourself you hated her and hated her child, but deep inside, you knew different.
I think you'd better go, Will.
Inside, you hated yourself, because you knew your pride was only hurting her, and for twenty-five years, it's made you a lonely man. You're a lonely man now, Mr. Dean.
Will, get out of my house.
All right, I'm going, but you know something, Mr. Dean? We may lose the election, but when it comes right down to it, you're the one I feel sorry for.
You are certainly right about one thing, Will, the whole town turned out-
Well, the execution gonna proceed on schedule, Will?
Just waiting for you Doc. Oh, thanks for setting up here on the platform with us.
Well, I figured seeing me up here might remind some of my patients to pay their bills. Evening Ava, hiya Maggie.
Hi Doc.
All right, Will, let mirth and joy rain unrestrained.
Well, might as well get started. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. You know, to you folks in Elyria, an election is a serious business, otherwise you wouldn't be here tonight. Well, it is to me too, or I wouldn't be here either. You see, this year, for the first time, I endorsed a candidate for the Town Council, and we started our campaign. Then last night, everything went wrong. The trouble was caused by this article in the County Herald, which is not one of the better newspapers in these parts. It's badly written, the type's blurred, and it's printed on rather pretty poor stock. In fact, I just don't recommend it at all. Anyway, anyway, as you all know, the article attacked my candidate, a woman I respect and believe in. And I thought you'd want to listen to her side of it, so that's why she's here. Folks, Ms. Ava Lawson. All right Ava, go tell it to them, and good luck.
Thanks, Will. What are the chances, Will?
Maggie, ask me twenty minutes from now.
My fellow townspeople and friends, tonight I'm not making a political speech. This is something far different, and far more difficult, but something that has to be done. I'd like to begin by going back a number of years and telling you something about the kind of life I led. I have all of the facts, as I see the facts at least, so I tried not to leave anything out. Well, there's the story, thank you for listening to it. I'm through now, I have nothing- I'm through now, I have nothing more to say. Tomorrow is Election Day, or as you might call it, Judgment Day.
Maggie, therefore, listen to that, they're on her side.
Sure I am.
Looks like she pulled it out of the fire, Will.
Oh, I couldn't go through with that again if my life depended on it.
Well, it's all over now, Ava, the apple cart's right-side up again. If they'll only remember tomorrow how they felt tonight.
Ava?
Jim.
Ava, I sat out there listening, pulling for you all the way, kicking myself for acting like I had.
Jim.
And then I saw this paper, here, take a look at it.
What's the matter with Jim, anyway?
Will, look.
Huh?
That picture last night at the lake, it's you and me, Will, in the water with just our heads showing. But read the caption, Will.
Editor and candidate in midnight swimming party at Jedders Lake.
Read all about it!
And they're selling it all over the park.
People are sure read a lot into that that's not there.
Well, there goes the election, right out the window.
Okay, Tommy, thanks very much.
More returns, Maggie?
Eighth precinct, 110 to 96, needless to say, we're on the short end.
I'm sorry, Will.
Yeah, it was that photograph in the Herald, cost us a thousand votes, just enough to lose. Well, we placed second, anyway.
It's all my fault, that's the thing that...
Come in.
Good evening.
What can we do for you, Mr. Dean?
Accept my apologies for one thing. That picture the Herald printed, I, I didn't know about it ahead of time. And the Herald, by the way, won't be sending any more additions into Elyria.
Well, now I...
Ms. Lawson, Ava, my congratulations.
It's the other way around, isn't it? I'm the one who lost.
I resigned from the council about an hour ago, and I got them to appoint you to fill out my term. Since I just re-elected, that means a full four years.
I don't understand.
Yeah, maybe Will can explain it to you. Explained a few things to me yesterday. You're right, Will, I am a lonely man, one who needs his granddaughter. Would like a chance to prove to her that he can change, once he's made up his bull-headed mind to. Well, goodnight, granddaughter, everyone.
I wouldn't believe that if I hadn't heard it.
Will, it looks as though I owe quite a lot to you.
Nothing a youth center won't pay for.
There'll be one. I just can't believe it about, about grandfather.
Well, if you can, Ava, forgive and forget. He does need you, and it wasn't easy for him to come here tonight. Well, it's not much of a trick to see ourselves as others see us. The hard part is believing it and admitting it, and that's what he did.
Is anybody here speaking to fools tonight?
I am, Jim.
Are you in the mood to listen to abject apologies?
Yes, among other things.
My car's outside.
And what are we waiting for?
Will, I'm sorry. I guess I was a real idiot.
You sure as a dickens were. Go on, get outta here, the both of you. See you tomorrow, goodnight.
Goodnight.
Maggie, I don't know quite how it happened, but we came out all right after all.
Well, by all logic, we shouldn't have...
Oh, logic's all right, Maggie, as long as it's on your side, but you don't really need it. You know, it's kinda like that famous paradox of Zeno.
The ancient Greeks, Will, at this time of night...
Now, it seems that a fella named Hercules was gonna run a race with a turtle. Well, naturally, they gave the turtle a head start. So Zeno pointed out that before Hercules could catch the turtle, first he'd have to cover half the distance between them, then half the remaining distance, then half of that, and so on. Logically, then, he'd always have half the remaining distance to go, and no matter how fast he'd run, he'd never quite catch up to that turtle.
So, what happened?
Well, Hercules didn't know about logic, but he was a darn good runner, he won the race.
You have just heard Rogers of the Gazette starring Mr. Will Rogers Jr. with Georgia Ellis as Maggie Button. Tonight's story was written by Les Crutchfield and produced and transcribed by Norman McDonald. Featured in the cast were Parley Bayer as Doc and Mary McGovern as Jill, with Virginia Gregg, Will Wright, John Stevenson, Byron Kane, and John Danner. The special music was composed by Renee Garrigank and conducted by Wilbur Hatch. This is Bob Lamon speaking.
July 22nd, 1953, Rogers of the Gazette on Classic Radio Theater.
If your credit card bills have gotten out of hand and you care about your credit, call Consolidated Credit now. If the interest rates on your credit cards are so high, it'll take years to get out of debt, call Consolidated Credit now. They've helped over six million people with credit card debt without destroying your credit. They can consolidate your debts into one lower payment, reduce your interest rates, and get you out of debt fast. The program works, call Consolidated Credit now. Call 800-406-0046, 800-406-0046, that's 800-406-0046. Consolidated Credit Counseling Services, Inc., 5701 West Sunrise Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33313. Licensed by the New York Department of Financial Services and by the Vermont Department of Financial Regulation. Maryland DM 1482, Oregon DM 80092. Licensed by the Virginia State Corporation, Commission License Number DC83. Service may adversely affect the individual's credit. Nonpayment of debt may lead to additional finance charges or collections activity, including legal action, not a loan company.
This is an urgent health notice for all residents suffering from back, neck, knee, and wrist pain. You may qualify for a pain-relieving brace at little or no cost to you, but the deadline is fast approaching. Simply call the Health Alert Hotline now.
You heard right, you may qualify for a pain-relieving back, neck, knee, or wrist brace. These items may even be covered by Medicare or your private insurance. The Health Alert Hotline is your brace company. These specialized braces have been tested for pain relief. Call us toll-free right now to determine your eligibility and to learn how to use your private insurance or Medicare to minimize your out-of-pocket cost. Don't wait, if the deadline passes, you may lose your opportunity to get a pain-relieving back, neck, knee, or wrist brace at little or no cost to you.
800-223-3831, 800-223-3831, 800-223-3831, that's 800-223-3831.
If you're over the age of fifty and considering buying an annuity in the next sixty days, I have some important news for you. Don't buy an annuity until you understand the pros and cons of annuities. A free book to help you maximize your retirement income from television host and three-time author Josh Melberg has been released. This book reveals little-known truths about annuity strategies in simple-to-understand terms. Grab a pen right now, because we are about to offer you this free book that unlocks the five little-known secrets we believe baby boomers and seniors should know before buying an annuity. Call 800-985-1813 now, and you'll receive a free copy of Josh Melberg's book, Next Gen Annuity Strategies Revealed. As a bonus, we'll also send you a copy of The Number One Mistakes Retirees Are Making With Their Investments Today, and a free DVD on how you can get up to 33% more income in retirement. Call 800-985-1813 now, again, that's 800-985-1813. Employees of J.D. Melberg Financial have the appropriate licenses for the products they offer.
Well, let's have some laughs here on Classic Radio Theater, Lamon Abner from July 22nd, 1948.
And now let's see what's going on down in Pine Ridge. Well, Abner and Elizabeth are planning to remarry in order to satisfy one of the provisions of a strange will in which Abner has been named one of the beneficiaries. And as we look in on the little community today, we find Lum in the Jotun Down store discussing the marriage with Abner.
Listen, Saturday, I thought the wedding was gonna be Friday.
Well, so did I, Lum, but Elizabeth postponed it so she'd have one more day to get everything set. Figured she might get an extra shower if there was more time.
Shower?
Yeah, you know, where the women folks all get together and give you some kind of a present they know you can't use.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Oh, I've had you, Elizabeth, and just lost her reason over this, Lum. You've never seen such going on as this over at my place. You'd think this was the first time she'd ever got married.
Well, it is the first regular wedding she's ever had, eloped the first time.
Yeah, wish now the ladder's broke.
What'd you say?
Uh-uh, nothing. Lum, I just don't know where I'm gonna live through this, though.
Oh, well, it'll all be over by Saturday.
No, it won't, we're leaving on our honeymoon then.
Honeymoon?
Yeah, going over to Hot Springs, leastways I talked her out in Niagara Falls.
Well, you'll be back in a couple of days, surely worth going through all this to get a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, but the worst part of it is, I found out now that I don't have to do this at all.
What do you mean?
Well, I got to warn you that if I waited too long, I might send that blank to them lawyers, and they might think I was dead or something, and I'd miss out on a hunt. I sent them a telegram, just tell them what was holding things up.
You told them you was getting remarried over to get a marriage license to send them?
Yeah, and then this morning, I get a telegram back saying that I don't have to bother with all that stuff.
Huh?
They said they'd take my word I was married and for me to just hurry up and fill out the blank and send it to them.
Well, my goodness, you better show that to Elizabeth then and call the wedding off.
I done showed it to her, but she says we ain't calling the wedding off. She's bound and determined to go through it.
She is, huh?
Oh, there ain't nothing that can stop her now. She says all her life, she's always wanted a big church wedding with a regular preacher to do the marrying. Says this is her big chance, and if she don't do it now, she never will.
Well, if she's got her head set to it, well, I don't reckon there's a whole lot she can do.
Oh, it's just like arguing with a stump on fire, there ain't nothing I can do.
Well, of course, you don't have, or, no, no, you couldn't do that.
Couldn't do what?
No, it won't work. I was gonna say that as long as you don't need the new license now, you wouldn't need to go to the wedding yourself, but...
No, I don't think I, no, 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 I couldn't do that, Lum. I thought about it, but then I got to thinking that Elizabeth had looked kinda silly standing up there by herself getting married.
Yeah.
And then too, some other feller might accidentally have to be standing near her there about the time the preacher says, "I now pronounce you man and wife," then I'd have a new brother-in-law. Or a, no, a new husband-in-law, or, well, I'd better be there. I don't wanna get into trouble that I can't even figure out.
No, if Elizabeth's going to visit, why you have to be there, too?
I know, and the worst part of it is, Elizabeth says it's gonna be formal.
Formal?
Yeah, you know, women folks, uh, all wear them long dresses, and the men have to wear them tuxedo's.
Oh, you mean formal?
Yeah, now where am I gonna get a tuxedo?
You ain't got one no more, huh?
No more, never had one.
I thought you used to have one when you used to play with the Mandolin and Boatin Club String Assembly.
No, no, we wore white britches and yellow striped coat.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And straw sailer hat. I recollect the hats, 'cause I always kept breaking the string over mine.
Let me see, where could you get a tuxedo?
Well, I ain't gonna buy one, just like throwing money away.
I don't know about that, rich as you are, or gonna be, well, you might be wearing one of them things all the time.
All the time?
Sure, lots of rich men dress that way for every day.
Well, what's use to being rich if you can't be comfortable?
Well, they say a body can get used to might not anything if it sits his head to it.
Well, I ain't gonna spend the rest of my life getting used to something like that, no matter how rich I am.
Well, if you don't buy a tuxedo, I don't know where you're gonna get one that'll fit you. Even if there was somebody around here that would lend you one that wouldn't have fit you.
No.
I've still got that old second-hand one I bought that time I'd left it head out over at the lodge.
Yeah, where is that thing?
It's hanging up back there in the feedroom, I think, but it's a way yonder too big for you.
Yeah, well, I don't know, maybe I can talk Elizabeth out of all this. I'll keep working on her, anyway.
Yeah, I better do that.
Hey, there's Grandpappy Spears heading over this way. Maybe he'll know where I, oh, no, I doubt if he even knows what a tuxedo is.
You ain't told Grandpap about your inheritance, have you?
Why, of course not.
Now be sure you don't, 'cause recollecting that's supposed to be a secret.
Yeah.
If you let Grandpap found out about it, you might as well put it in the paper.
Don't worry, I ain't gonna tell him nothing, though.
Yeah, howdy, howdy, howdy.
Howdy, Grandpap.
Yeah, what's all this pigeon-told husking-shucking about you and Elizabeth getting married again?
Yep, Saturday.
Well, what's the big howdy, ain't once bad enough?
Yeah, but Elizabeth just sorta thought it'd be nice, you know how sentiment women folks are.
Hey, Abner, if you're gonna be here for a few minutes, I think I'll run over to Dick Huddleston and see if we've got any mail.
Yeah, sure, all right.
I'll be back directly.
Uh-huh, take your time.
I just don't get it, Abner, what's back of this wedding howdy?
Oh, nothing at all, I told you, Grandpap, Elizabeth thought it'd be kinda Roman addicts.
Aw, sassy trash.
Well, she did.
Sassy trash.
You know where I can get a tuxedo?
Don't change the subject.
I ain't trying to change the subject, I just gotta get a tuxedo before Saturday, 'cause Elizabeth says I got to wear one at the wedding.
Wear one what?
Tuxedo.
What in the name of tarnation is a tuxedo?
Oh, you know, one of them monkey suit things.
Oh, well, if I didn't just say so, you gotta wear one of them, huh?
That's what my woman says.
Now, I don't understand this second wedding at all.
Well, it's too late to order one, and I wouldn't buy one if I could. I don't know nobody I could borrow one from.
Well, you're lucky.
But I've got to get one summers, Grandpap.
Only feller I know that's got one is Lum.
Yeah, but, of course, that wouldn't fit me.
Well, cut it down.
Oh, I couldn't do that, wouldn't dare to.
Well, figure it out for yourself, then, that's the only thing I know to do.
Well, I know good and well I couldn't do nothing. Course, Lum hardly ever wears a thing, just hanging back there in the feedroom gathering dust. Maybe I could just sorta fold the pants up a little bit.
Yeah, or cut 'em off one.
Maybe I better get that thing out, just take a look at it, sorta.
Yeah, might as well.
Hey, will you get the phone there for me, Grandpap, and I'll go get that suit back?
Yeah, sure. Hello, Jotun Down Store. No, this is Milford Spears. No, he ain't here. Well, now, you might catch him over at Dick Huddleston's store, I believe I heard him say he's going over there. Not yet, oh, goodbye. Sounded like Elizabeth. Hey, get the suit, Abner?
Yeah, who was that on the phone, is it?
It sounded sorta like Elizabeth, I believe, she wanted to talk to Lum.
What'd she want with him?
I don't know, she never said, and I never asked her. How does the suit fit?
Well, wait I get it on here, I know it's gonna be too big, though, sorta sell it even try it, I reckon.
I'll get the scissors.
Well, now, let's talk rest into this, Grandpap.
Yeah, straighten up there, Abner. Yeah, good foot's gonna have to come off the bottom of them trousers.
Well, don't you think we could just fold 'em up there?
Oh, they'd look too bulky.
What, huh?
I forget you're gonna get married in these shoes, you wanna. Start cutting now?
Well, now, wait a minute, now, after all, this is Lum's suit, not mine.
Well, you said yourself he never wears it.
Well, no, we don't, but...
Will he want it for the wedding?
Oh, no, I doubt if he'll even go to the wedding. He offered to marry us for nothing, but Elizabeth wouldn't have him. She wants a regular preacher, don't want no justice of the peace this time.
Yeah, here goes.
Grandpap, now you sure we're doing the right thing here?
You can't wear a tiss away.
No.
It hangs back there and gathers dust. There, now, let's see how that looks. Do them pant legs hang just about right for you now?
Can you get rid of that dip on the left one there a little bit?
Oh, sure.
Looks like I've got one fat.
Well, if you sorta bend that one knee, I don't believe anybody'll notice it. Yeah, let's see about the coat now, what do you think, about six inches off of them sleeves?
Well, I want my hands to show.
Yeah, well, we can take care of that.
Oh, ow!
Excuse me.
Careful with them things.
Well, let's have the other sleeve.
Say, what am I gonna do for buttons on the sleeve, you cut 'em off?
Well, what do you need them things for anyways? Don't button up nothing with 'em.
No.
I never have found a use for 'em. Course, if you want 'em, you can sew 'em on back on there, I don't care.
Yeah, maybe I can get Elizabeth to sew 'em on. Uh, no, she's such a sad, blame-bigger, I doubt she'd have time to do nothing.
Hey, Abner, oh, you got her suit, huh?
Huh?
Now, it's kinda shoddy looking, but I believe it fits you pretty good.
Yeah.
Say, I got some good news, Elizabeth just called me over at Dick Huddleston's store.
Well...
She wants me to be your best man at the wedding.
She does?
Yeah, so it looks like I'll have to wear my tuxedo, too, I hope it still fits me.
I wish it would, too, Lum.
Course, styles has changed since then, the new look has came in, I'd sure like to have that.
Lum, I don't know what the new look is, but when you step out with your tuxedo on, I dogged boy, you're gonna have it.
Well, what will Lum say when he sees his new look tuxedo? And after he sees it, will Abner be in shape for a wedding or anything else?
Lamon Abner, July 22nd, 1948, on Classic Radio Theater. Yeah, this is a weird one. Uh, of course, aren't they all? Thanks so much for tuning into Classic Radio Theater, visit my webpage, won't you please, classicradio.stream, that's classicradio.stream, where you, uh, tune in, you can find our podcasts on demand, learn more about classic radio collecting, and contact me directly, classicradio.stream. And of course, our podcasts, as I said, available anywhere fine podcasts are served, just search for USA Classic Radio Theater. Have yourself a great day, won't you please? I'm Wyatt Cox, do me a favor, thank this radio station, support the advertisers, tell a friend, the great radio shows are back. Classic Radio Theater here on your favorite station and the USA Radio Network.